You, I knew I was forgetting something. Everybody's in. Jeffrey was going to be on Zoom if he had signal. If he didn't, wasn't going to be available, so. Looks like maybe he doesn't have signals.
All meeting order. We'll start with pledge of allegiance. Roll call.
Mockler.
Here.
Freelo. Brady.
Here.
Daisy.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing on approval of agenda.
The move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion passes. Proof of minutes.
So move.
Second.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard?
Good morning, right? We all survived last night, so it's good to see us here.
Fairly.
Did you bat up in Beardsford?
Yeah.
Sorry to hear that. I'm just here on behalf of the Vermillion Chamber Development Company. As you know, last year we had our grow campaign. You pledged some funds, subject to budget approval and things. So I wanted to give you our, as a visionary, just wanted to hand personally to you, your board, many other vehicles. So thank you for that very much. It was made by a, or sort of by a local business, just talked about you know us. And then I'm not going to talk at length on it, but I wanted to give a handout, little bit reminding people what the grow campaign was, raised a little over $2 million collectively. And the big thing, right, our main goal is grow jobs, grow tax base. So I'll be back in a month or two, but I'll get on your agenda, give you an update where we are. Well, going forward, I brought one extra brochure, because I'm not sure Glenn was that aware of what the whole campaign is. So when I go, if they talk, if you have questions, you can see me out, if you have a lot of other important things to talk on. Thank you. Quite important. We are growing the tax base, as you saw, we don't disclose that list point one tip with response to everybody. And we have, doing an east side water study to grow the population. That way we have about three businesses. You'll be involved in one in the JJZA upcoming and a couple in accounting we're working on. So with that, we'll let you go. Have a good morning.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your support.
Any other visitors? Hearing none. 4H educator Lori.
Morning. I'm Lori Fritsch, the new 4H educator for Clay and Union Counties. And I live in Vermillion. Come in with a background of Southeast, I grew up in southeast Minnesota on a grain and livestock farm. About 750 acres, was a 10-year 4H member in Fillmore County. Kind of an interesting side note, my parents now deceased were, received a lifetime achievement award about five years ago. And so we were heavily involved as a family. As far as my educational background, I have a associate of applied science from University of Minnesota, Wasika, and an agricultural journalism degree from Iowa State University. Have worked in a lot of leadership roles similar to this, where it required time management, financial management, event planning, and several other things. So this morning, I, I just wanted you to look at some of the things I've been up to. I started on June 2nd. So there's some different activities, meetings I've been in. I didn't put every meeting or committee meeting on here, but I would just want to track this for myself as well. And so we're nearing the Union County Fair yet this week, and the Clay County Fair next week, so. I think we're fairly prepared for both of those. And while I'm up here, I just want to say that the position had been open for quite some time. But the adult leaders, the 4Hers themselves, and the administrative assistants, Raleigh Sykes in Vermillion, and Sean Tabby in Elk Point have done phenomenal job. They've been extremely supportive and getting me, kind of helping me get my feet on the ground and running, and I'm excited about some of the projects that we have upcoming. And as far as my other background related to this, I've been into publishing as editor for a magazine called Farm Equipment Magazine, where it was read by farm equipment dealers. Another one, my first job out of Iowa State was Prairie Farmer Magazine as a field editor, where I covered the state of Illinois. Agriculture, beef safety, anything else that needed to be covered relating to agriculture. And then most recently, I'm going to skip a few years here, just before taking this position, I was the senior administrative assistant for the computer science department here at USD. So with that, I think I'll, I guess, one of the questions I have are, I'd like to know how you would like me to communicate from time to time, and how often you would like me to, to be at a county commissioners meeting, so I can plan ahead.
Lauren did what, quarterly reports? She just would simple pack it together.
Okay.
For what happened during that quarter.
Okay, sounds good.
Then you can be here as often as you want.
Sure. I appreciate that. Well, I guess that would be, I'll conclude my intro at that point, and then I see there's some other agenda items here.
Your computer purchase, that's, that's, that was a laptop and two monitors, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Carrie, is there anything left in their budget?
I didn't look at that.
Do you, have you seen last year's, do you know what's left in your budget?
Um, I'm not quite certain at this point.
It wouldn't already be allocated towards something else.
Not that I'm aware of.
We did do the copier purchase, so that might have, that might have eaten up quite a bit of that.
Yeah.
What do we have in the commissioners contingency?
We have not done any transfers yet for that this year.
And I'm going to defer to Kevin on this, because he's our laptop, I mean, with what was described here.
Yeah, I saw it too, and that was a lot of my questions, that's what's in the budget due, because I know a lot of things right now, so I don't know their. Part of that is, is that, is Union County buying one as well as us, or?
Yes.
Okay.
They've already purchased.
You're not going back and forth with the laptop, you're?
Staying, one in each county.
Okay. Did you have a laptop there, or did you?
It's a laptop, yep.
Guess part of that would have been, I wonder, it would have been easier to get a, a docking station for each place and just use the laptop back and forth, is that possible, or?
It's, it's, I could check with the actions to see what we can do.
And I have two monitors, a decent size, and I would literally donate to the cost, because I get rid of them for a while, so.
Sure.
I would more than glad, hold them, they're probably 27 inches, so. I would like to give them to you, you might have to buy a couple of cables to be in.
Right.
But I was just wondering, yeah, a docking station would make more sense at each place, and just have the computer work back and forth, or is UD County, would they be amicable with that?
I think they'd be open to that, yeah. I can talk to.
We'd pay our way.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be simple. Would that be easier for you to have one?
You, I think it'd be just, either way would be fine, but for saving of resources, it would probably be a wise decision, go with one laptop. See if we can get a docking station for both.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, uh, obviously we're going to be here again soon, so if you get some information on the cost of a couple of dockings, once everyone's here, and.
Okay.
See if you do some.
Alright.
Cost split with Union County, that'd probably be a little better than cranking out a couple of computers, especially for you when you have files back and.
Those 188 bucks for docking, oh, with charging, that's easy then. I didn't miss that.
I'll check into it for you.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
I have monitors, so we can definitely, that'll make it easier for you.
Sure.
Bring us by today.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, if we could do that, I think that might be a little better than trying to go a whole nother computer route.
Okay.
It might be, might be better for you too. What do you, or do they need some kind of cloud storage for the, for the county, or?
I can't answer that entirely. We use a little bit different system than I was using at USD for storage. We use Box instead of OneDrive, that sort of thing, as far as how much storage that, that is.
Had to remove my IT days, but I was hoping maybe you have VPN access, so you know, when you're here or there, I guess I don't know where the main file storage would be.
Right, I don't know for sure myself.
Okay. We can probably sit down after and discuss too, and try to, try to figure it out, so by next Tuesday when we meet, that way we have a little better idea of where, what we need as far as cost wise, and if this will be feasible, so.
Okay.
What days are we doing, office here?
Uh, this week I'm, I'm taxed to El Cester until next Sunday, so I won't be, and then we've got Clay County Fair after that, so I'm going to be kind of.
Yeah, well, let's get through the fairs then. Yeah, we won't, we won't too much.
Maybe the, uh, let's see, it'd be August 15th, that following week I could be available sometime.
You okay until then?
Sure.
Okay.
I can make it work.
I'll bring the monitors by, so you can have those.
Alright.
You know, and I think I have HDMI cords to go with it, so, yeah, if that seems more peaceful, it's probably a little more better for one of our budgets, I'm sure.
Exactly.
Better place either, so.
Alright.
I'm sure SDSU is the one that probably stores, since they're the ones in charge of 4H, would they be the, the one to ask for?
Probably, there's probably. Yeah, I guess it depends on, yeah, you're probably right, you probably do already VPN in, if it is not the counties.
I used to, when I was at USD, I had to actually go through a VPN process, but I don't now, so I'm not sure how that's different, if it's just been streamlined to the point I don't need to. Or I don't know that I am, maybe, I guess, I'm not a computer expert that way.
Okay, maybe I'll do a little calling up to, there's an SDSU, and see if I could find something out, try to help you out too, so. Yeah, if we can go back and forth with the laptop, I think that.
Okay.
Make more sense.
Because then what we, she'd just have a wireless keyboard and mouse at this office, so she'd then just drag that around in the docking station.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
And then whatever it's going to cost for them to hook it up, I suppose.
Okay.
Probably won't be three hours anymore, but.
No. Three hours to prep, yeah, well, yeah. And I'm assuming a lot of that prep is probably because of the connecting to SDSU server, if that's where all the files are, so. And if it's already set up, then we could probably discuss with Union County as far as what it's going to cost to split that.
Right.
Yeah, let's get together as soon as we can, and we'll kind of figure, figure this out, but. That would be some good cost savings for, for both counties, I think, so. And depending on how touchy they are about it, if, I don't know if they're sending an IT person from somewhere, but I can still do something, except they don't mind.
Yeah. We use, it depends, RTI is a company that, if I need some tech support, they help. SDSU will help in certain situations, depends on what the complication is, and then there's sentry business products, there's about two, three different directions I need to go, depending on what kind of help I need, so.
If they don't mind too much, I can set up a docking station, I'm pretty sure, but depends on how touchy they are with their IT departments.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, if you can give me a contact for, maybe who to talk to at SDSU, that might help me, so I don't have to search quite so.
Sure.
Yeah, then, but let's keep in touch.
Okay.
Think you have my number stills.
Sounds good. All about saving money when it makes sense.
Right.
Uh, ready to move on to the budget then, for her? I don't have a computer, anybody have any questions? So 2026 budget request. Some lines went up, some went down, overall, your down, budget request is down $258. Janitorial? Oh, who does that?
They have a person that comes in and cleans, is it once a week, Lori?
I believe it's once a week.
I think so. It's about $35 each time.
Anybody have any questions on the budget? Anything you'd like to add?
Um, the travel and conference budget, I did, did bump it up a little bit, and that's only because I haven't been in the job, excuse me, long enough to quite understand what the travel is going to entail, although I am required to work one regional event, which, which would be someplace in the 17 southern counties, and then I'm also required to work five state or national events during the year, so depending on where those types of opportunities take me for the 4H program, I'm not quite sure. That could include camps, it could include trip to Washington DC with a short course citizenship course for 4Hers. It, it, I guess it varies as far as where the state or national help would be. I don't believe it would in, include a lot of national travel at all, but I just want it. So whether or not we use the entire budget, I'm, I'm not sure, but I managed travel for USD from 2016 to 2024, and it is more expensive than it used to be, so I would rather have it in the budget and not have to use it than have it in the budget and have to ask for more, so I went a little bit, added a little bit to that, and then it's, it's also related to the fleet vehicle to some degree. If you don't mind if I skip down to that one. I've been in contact with Sean Cruz and Dr. Tim Tanner, the director of 4H programs in Brookings, and it's been requested by the state that we turn in the designated vehicle that we've been using in the past. It, at this time, it doesn't, I will be putting on miles, but I don't believe I'll be meeting the 500 mile. You have to drive at least 500 miles a month to keep a designated vehicle, and I've been told that they're looking at getting, letting go of 250 to 300 fleet vehicles, and if you're a person that uses a fleet every day, you're more likely to, you know, continue using it, so what they're suggesting is I turn it in, I'll probably do that in September, based on Dr. Tanner's recommendation, and then use a fleet. If, I'll use my personal vehicle within the counties, and anywhere up to an hour outside the counties, if it gets more than an hour outside the borders, then I would be reserving a fleet vehicle, for example, like state fair, I've got a minivan reserved. We've got to take non-l livestock projects up on the 26th, and I'll be judging presentation, communication presentations for five days, and coming back on September 2nd, so I am not charging for mileage to Elk Point or to Vermillion, when I go to work every day. I just don't feel right about that, so. That's my donation to the 4H organization, I guess, if you want to call it that, but everybody has to drive to work, and I feel like I can be responsible to cover those expenses, so. So like I said, the travel conference budget may not, it's a little bit higher than what was originally there, but I'm going to try to work within those fences, so to speak, and go from there. So as far as the fleet vehicle, Dr. Tanner has advised me to make sure I get that turned in in September. I don't really believe without meeting that 500 mile, right, two year month, that we can keep it based on what I've been told. I will be doing club tours this fall, getting into the schools this fall, different kinds of things like that, but that's kind of where we're at with the fleet vehicle. More at the state's recommendation to, to turn it in.
Any questions? Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it. And I will get in touch after the fairs.
Sounds good.
Hello, I'm Ryan Anderson, 911 Communication Center Director, with my 2026 budget. One thing to keep in mind about my budget is it is split with the city, so the county pays half, city pays half. One of the biggest changes, I guess you'll probably see, is under what I call professional services. In this building, we had paid our radio system annual maintenance fees in advance, so those, those have not been in the budget for a few years. Going to the new building, we're going to have an additional radio council, and we also did not purchase that, and we purchased the system for the new building. So we're going to have that yearly fee again for service and maintenance, and that agreement, that added to the budget.
How much is that?
That was $29,000. Yep, $29,000 a year. And one of the, almost like an insurance policy, if, if we have a problem, they will respond within so many hours. Where if we don't have an agreement, they can just put us on their schedule, they can just come whenever they want. So that's a big part of it, is getting them here when we need them here if something fails, and then they also update the software and come and work on our system whenever we need something done, so. It is, you know, it is an expense that we have, and not had for a few years, because we purchased it in advance, but we will have it again now, right forward. Um, the other major, I guess the, it wasn't too much, but a little, went up a little bit, were the telephones. Prior to this, the police department paid for one-third of our internet, and I paid for two-thirds. The user board has decided to move it all under a five budget, so I am going to pay for all of it, and then we also are having two internet, coming in from two different hotlines out there, so if one were to get cut, we'd have a backup internet out there. So the internet itself did go up a little bit, in addition to me picking up all of the internet for the building, so that did increase. Other than that, I believe everything pretty much stayed the same. Obviously, no major purchases, because we are getting the new building, and everything is going to be new out there anyway.
So it's 141,000 for the equipment replacement, is that what?
For the equipment replacement?
Yeah, or is that my reading that wrong?
Uh, I don't think I had any equipment replacement.
I might have missed it.
Yeah, there, I mean, everything is going to be new out there, so we're not replacing the equipment, because I'm not sure where that, sad, but.
Any other questions?
Net 263, that's the, that's the, still the request?
I'm not seeing the 263.
The E911.
We split his budget between two funds, we split it between the 911 fund and the county general fund, because the revenue from the 911 fund doesn't cover what we need to operate, so it's probably the 263 plus whatever that other fund is, I don't have it in front of me.
I believe.
So it's like three.
385.
385.
I believe what it is, that would be the county's half, and then, as Carrie was saying, part of that is funded by the 911 surcharge that the county brings in.
911 surcharge is generally somewhere between 115 to 120,000 a year.
So that would be off of this number then?
It'd be off of the 385,000.
So that's where that, this number's coming from, okay.
Yep.
And then our half is the 200.
Our half, our half is still like the 385, but part of that comes directly from that 911 surcharge money. So the county general fund is covering about that 263,000, yeah.
And then this 29,000, what was that, is that on top of this?
Nope, that was part of that 385.
Okay, okay.
Yep, that's just how much it increased in what I call professional services, how much that increased in 2026. And again, that's just due to the radio council service agreement being purchased in advance.
Okay.
In this building, and we didn't do that for the new building.
Do we have any other questions? Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Lane?
Okay, I'll time again, I believe that the quarterly report was in your packet, so. Very self-explanatory, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do I have any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Okay. Do you want this one? Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Entertain a motion to go into ditch board.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We're in ditch board. Approve the mileage and per diem invoices for joint ditch board meeting.
Approves the invoices.
Second. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Scott, in the committee.
Do we need to come up?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, I need a motion to come out of ditch board.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in regular session. Now, committee and Scott.
Committee has completed their task, I guess. Did the whole process of pre qualification and we did RFP request for proposal. I refresh everybody's memory. We went, we went through a scoring system on this process. Came down to two firms were the only ones that we had five firms that from our prequal, pre qualification, but out of them five, only two submitted RFPs. One was Lloyd Construction, the other was L and L Builders. So here last week and then the week before, we went through, they, they handed in a qualitative proposal and that, that had a possible total score of fifty. We scored those. All this scoring on here was done without collaboration between committee members. Nobody knew if the other committee member was scoring or what their thoughts were. So there was no conversation taking place during the scoring. So we did a qualitative score, both set a score and on management plan, which had a total of thirty five points. And then project schedule plan, which had a total of fifteen and everything rounded up to a hundred points. That, that was possible. So we did all that. We came together. Everything was handed into Carrie. She did all the math, totaled everything up. Came up with their scores for these three areas. And came up with, with their average score. And that's, you take that and you take, and then we opened up their price proposals yesterday. And you divide that by their score and divide that by a thousand and whoever comes out with the lowest is the person we go with. So L and L came in pretty high, six, seven hundred and sixty thousand for the courthouse. And one point six million for the safety center. L and L came in at four hundred.
Lloyd.
Four, four oh five, three forty eight for the courthouse. Four hundred, yeah, four and five thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars. They came in at seven hundred and eighty thousand, six ninety three for the safety center.
That's Lloyd.
That was Lloyd trip. So when you do the math, Lloyd comes out with a score of fifteen point zero one, L and L twenty eight point seven zero. And according to how the whole process works, the low, the low person is who we're recommending. With that said, I guess the commissioners have a right to just the, the whole thing or I guess we're looking, do we go forward from here? What's our next step? That sort of thing.
So back in the spring, if you remember, we, you, we worked with Tegra to prepare what's called the procedures for design build procurement. That was adopted by the commission back this March. In this document, under section nine, it says the county shall enter a contract with the firm selected as provided above, meaning the lowest score. So here it'd be Lloyd at fifteen over twenty eight. At the time of the award, the county may negotiate changes clarifying the design criteria and scope of work. So it gives us the flexibility to continue to work with them specifically. And then, you know, to try to either reduce or make some changes because obviously it's in excess of what our nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, I think was the total amount. And then under section nine, some second, you know, section six here, it says the county reserves the right to reject all proposals. So pursuant to the procedure that we agreed upon, our options are either to work with Lloyd on the scope of work or to reject all bids. Obviously the Lloyd construction bid for the courthouse is four hundred and five thousand and some change, which is in excess of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Right.
Courthouse security grant approval. So anything above that three fifty is going to be a county obligation one hundred percent. Everything below that is seventy five, twenty five state pursuant to that grant. And then obviously the seven eighty is where they're at right now with the rest of the renovation. And the budget that the commission provided was six hundred.
With the way that we wrote this and they bid it, is it an all or nothing? Or can you piece out the courtroom?
Well, we can work with them on the scope. So I think what we would need to do is work with them throughout the entire, you know, looking at the entire project to see what we can do as it relates to the scope to come up with a decision. So I think the answer is the answer is that we just needed to sit down with them if the body here decides to engage Lloyd with further negotiation discussions with intention of moving towards work with them. Wouldn't we determine the scope of work appropriately and perhaps that ultimately only is the courtroom or portions of this other project as well. But either way, that would be what would be next, you know, the, the determination of what we can do from a scope of work perspective.
Yeah, we talked, talked among ourselves yesterday, you know, there's a lot of things we could do differently over here. There's stuff we could cut out due to later date, you know? So there's a lot of wiggle room. I don't know if a lot, but we got some wiggle room to kind of work that number down. So.
They were, they were fairly confident they could do that, especially when we told them about once this new, new facility is opened up that there, everything's wide open.
Yeah.
Up here or in the police department. So and you know, one thing I thought of was this.
Yeah.
This room, we could just leave that be. We were going to remodel that, but you know, we could get by without
Yeah.
doing this room. So.
Yeah, and other stuff upstairs that could be done differently, like, you know, I know those, those two bathrooms, the one in the day room and the one off the booking area, everybody liked to see those redone. But, you know, at the end of the day, they could be left to later time to do because we're going to have plenty of bathrooms out in the public sector, you know, and want to be as convenient for court services, but you know, they might have to go across the hall or whatever. But, I mean, so there's options out there. Things we could cut and not do maybe. So. I guess one of the concerns I had with Lloyd Construction was that when we, we interviewed these, these two firms last week and I noted on their proposal that they didn't pick up any of the addendum items and I asked them about that. They're, to me, seemed pretty confident in their proposal at that time. Even though they weren't on there. And so so we got, we got a phone call yesterday, or Carrie did, or email from L and L. That's kind of like
From Lloyd.
From Lloyd, that, that they might have missed that, blah, blah, blah. I don't know. You want to elaborate on that, Carrie?
They initially had missed my email with the addendum. And so, you know, he said, let me review it with my team and I'll get back to you today. Well, then a couple hours later, I got a phone call back and he, or, or an email back, I should say. Just letting me know that they can still, they can still work within that with, with the addendums. So that was not a problem. So.
That was a concern, my going into it, but that they, that they might have missed it. So.
Yeah, I, I said, well, I had sent the email on July third and clarified who I sent it to. And I said, here, let me just forward it back out again. And before I could even do that, he had found it in his email. So.
So I think they'll be, they'll be, they'll be easy to work with. And personally, I think we should go forward and see what we can work out of this whole thing. You know, maybe it is just a courtroom project, but that thing's been three years in the wind. Be nice to get that thing put to bed up there. Now it's a lot of work, but still, that's just my opinion on what I think we should do.
We can discuss contractual in executive session, right? Does, does that fall into, does this fall into that?
Let me look. Just want to make sure I'm. Certainly you can go in under, to discuss legal, with legal about contractual matters. So with legal counsel regarding contractual matters would be appropriate. So we can, if you want to table this and do an executive session.
Yeah.
Or we, or we could do executive now and come back, whatever.
We'll just do it later. You're okay with that?
Did you need me to come back for that?
You wouldn't have to.
Wouldn't have, okay. Well, if you need me, give me a call.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. So we need a motion to table this and later in the agenda?
Yeah.
Move table this later.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion passes. No. Now is the time and place for the second reading of the comprehensive plan.
The, the draft is on the county website. It's been publicly available ever since the last meeting. I decided not to go through with the adding of the parks or making any of the major adjustments because I feel like it would have been adding more to it and we would have had to have another first reading. So all it was, was doing the enter and back spaces and grammar fixes that we found the first reading. So other than that, same comprehensive plan that's presented before.
Anybody have any questions or concerns or?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty forty five comprehensive plan.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, hello?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay, thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, to just briefly revisit. There is still, would people be amenable to adding back in the park section as an amendment in the future? That was something we discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, yes. So we can go through and add that in later on. I do plan on revisiting this once a year, you know, with all the rezones that are going on. Everything that happens in the county, it's just natural to start revisiting it once a year.
That's great. So over the next year, we can discuss any sort of additions that we might, might be interested in and have discussions about those. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay, yep, that sounds good. That, that was all I wanted to check in on.
Yep. It doesn't have to be in annual either. We could do it at any time.
Yeah, and we, we can do it, you know, a day after, you know, it passes. So.
Makes sense. Yep.
Any further discussion? Carrie, is this a, just a regular vote or is it a roll call?
Um.
It's not a resolution?
It's your roll call, just to be safe.
It's a roll call.
Uh, Mockler.
Yes.
Graylog.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
T Z.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there something for me to sum in on this?
There will need to be a resolution.
Yeah.
At least there was twenty years ago.
Thought there was a resolution included. Didn't we have one in there or not? I don't have it right in front of me, so I might be just remembering the previous one.
I can get a resolution. Yes, sir.
Sounds good. Work with me on that, please.
Yep, yep. I'll be working with them on it. So. Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett. Speed limit signs on Burbank Road.
Yeah, Pete John from the city, he contacted me. He said he's been, he had a few people complain that they're coming off of Croft Road on the Burbank Road. If you had eased the first speed limit you see until the end of that development, right about the golf course. And then if you go to the west, the next speed limit isn't where the city is, where it's down to twenty five. So I'm just looking to see if maybe we could put thirty five speed limit going east and west on the map where it put the marks and stuff. Just solved some issues.
Yeah, I don't see that's a problem since it's already posted for that.
Okay. Sorry, make sure it's okay.
I don't think we need a mo, well, we'll take a motion to put him up.
I'll take a motion. I'll make a motion now.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Is there a sign where it changes to fifty five, Brett?
Yeah, it's further to the east.
East.
Yeah, it's a little bit. Yeah, pass those two houses, those two houses. Yeah.
Okay. And then southeast, southeast elevators driveway application.
Yep, for a culvert there on the north side, right in the right way there. Which, they could be fine.
Forty O two. Entertain a motion if you are.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We've got one for driveway application for Tom Corio.
Just in between kind of like three fourteen and John Shuffle's driveway, right that next hill right there, they want to put a driveway in there on the east side of the road and everything looked fine. Doesn't look like they need a culvert or nothing since it's on the hill. And looks okay.
Move to approve. Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. And are you going to see, no, okay. Did everybody get to see vouchers and payroll?
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
Move to pay vouchers. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Adoption of the twenty twenty six provisional budget. We can still change. This is just.
Yeah. Yep, this is approval of the provisional, which is essentially your draft. And then the, the final budget gets adopted at the last meeting in September.
And we nevermind. I was just, there were some numbers that we were going to get clarity on by, by or around the end of the month. I, again, I don't have all my detailed notes in front of me, so I'm not sure what those were. Do we have any more clarity on anything that was fuzzy? Again, I don't have all my detailed notes in front of me, so I'm not sure what those were, do we have any more clarity on anything that was fuzzy?
Um, other than just that I updated the things that you all removed at the last meeting, um. You know, the, the paver for the highway department, and, uh, you know, the legal assistant, some of those extra things that just were not in the budget.
And this won't be the final budget, this is just the rough.
Right.
So things can still be changed.
Yeah, I, I moved to approve the provisional.
We already have a motion.
The expectation we made, oh, sorry, gotcha.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion passes. The resolution for fund transfer, and this is going to be a Michael question, but. The document's wrong. You've got Dick Hammond and Betty Smith on there still?
Oh, do I, I can just reprint it with the correct one.
That's okay.
I didn't notice that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't update that part of it. I used last year's and just updated the numbers and, and the resolution number, and I missed that.
So as long as it's okay, we can move forward with it.
Dollar amounts are correct.
Yep.
Move to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one fund transfer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, hearing on roll call.
Mokler.
Yes.
Graylobe.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion to assign the funds for the nine one one equipment.
Um, so just for those that are listening, our, part of our agreement for the nine one one dispatch center with the city. Is that, um. Each year, whatever ten percent of that nine one one surcharge revenue is, that we, um, assign that, which essentially sets it aside for future equipment purchases. So that it builds up. Over the course of however many years, um, and then when they do need to make a big purchase, there's some money there to do that.
I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
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 All same. Motion passes. Uh, everybody get to see the done, department monthly reports?
Yep.
And then, the WIC contract renewal, have you, Lisa?
I have, Lisa and I looked at it together, it looks very similar to the previous one, I believe the state's picking up a larger portion this go around, obviously, it's again, one of those. Contracts that already started, so. Uh, but, yes, it looks. I think it started June first, I remember, right?
That's right.
Yeah, they're catching up, um, but it looks, it looks on par with previous ones that we've signed, and like I said, I believe the state's got a larger. Revenue percentage in this one, so.
Do you have that back upstairs?
Um, no, so that, what the email said was that they'll send it to you by DocuSign.
Okay.
So, once you guys approve it, because this was the draft, and once we've approved of it, then they will send it by DocuSign.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize me to sign that WIC contract.
I move the chairman to authorize to sign the WIC contract.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So I, I did have a, a question. Uh, so, i- in my reading of it, it seemed like there was a, a, a pretty. Major change in how they were calculating how much they were paying us, so I, I wasn't aware we were being paid on a pre, a per participant basis previously, is that? Am I getting that right, and now it's going to be a lump sum? Or a flat rate?
We were on a participant basis last time, yeah.
But the amount isn't changing, so it's calculated off our current participants, is, is that right, or am I misunderstanding?
Lisa was under the assumption based off her reading, and I didn't look at a previous one, uh, but she said that, uh, she thought that it was a bigger percentage coming from the state than previously.
Okay, okay.
So.
Didn't have any issues there, it, it just seemed like a, a, a potentially major change, and I just. Wanted to know what Lisa's thoughts were on it primarily, so thank you.
Yep, she felt comfortable with it.
Good. That's all from me.
I don't think we voted. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, Jeffrey, do you have anything for the Clay County Park?
Um, just at a, a s- small committee, um, so, we have a, a future land use committee that's trying to, to look a little bit longer into the future, so we make. Good strategic decisions, and, uh, we went down and had a nice meeting with Conca Park leadership. Um, they were willing to tour us all around the park, talk about things that work and don't work for them, you know, recognizing they are on a vastly different scale than us, I think they have a hundred employees in the summer. Um, but they are. Regionally, uh, connected to our park, you know, we're both on the river, we're, uh, we're an upstream kayak put in point, they're downstream kayak put in point, so there's some. Uh, maybe some, some areas where we can just partner on programming and things, so it was real, real positive meeting, and, uh, look forward to, hopefully, in the, in the long term, uh, it'd be. Be helpful, we had some discussion about maybe, maybe adding, uh, an additional cabin, or, uh, so a little bit more diversity in the, the camping offering seemed like the main takeaway.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Jeffrey, on the, the recent change out there on the hunting and trapping thing, was that complaint generated?
Um, it was, uh, that was based on, uh, staff, yeah, that was based on complaints relayed to staff, and then staff concerns, so. And I think it's something that we, my understanding is the, the executive board, I'm not on the executive board, but the, the executive board is going to be revisiting that. Um, just to, to make sure that it wasn't, uh, it wasn't made too hastily, that it was, uh, done with nuance, but I don't have, I don't have a lot of detail on that, but I can bring. Uh, some more detail on whether the discussions go to the next, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Mainly a concern, people, yeah, people were just worried about dogs getting caught and trapped, seemed like one of the main ones, and, and then abandoned, uh, uh, tree stands and stuff seemed like another ones. But, but I, anyway, I'll, I'll bring more details next up.
Any updates for the building, Andy, that you can think of? When I got a schedule for training on, uh, on door control on classrooms.
So much. I'm not talking too loud, Amy.
They're, they're giving us, um, a tentative move in date of the last week of September. We likely won't move in until middle of October, because we have to schedule the nine one one transition, and that's kind of out of our hands. Uh, that'll work okay, because we don't want to move in just before D days anyway, so just after. Other than that, there was, uh, there really no big, uh, uh, constraints hanging out there right now. There was a concern about one jail door, they were able to fix it rather than replace it, so. That's gonna, gonna save some of the, the time concern that they had, so I, I think we're running way ahead of schedule right now.
Signage looks nice.
Yeah. Yep, signs are up, um.
Fence is gone.
Landscaping is, yeah, fence is gone, landscaping is going in, I saw them planting trees this morning. There's still some concerns on getting the drainage to work, it seems like whenever they have time to do it, it rains the night before and then they have fun again. Uh, but we. Need to tie in those drainage ponds into the storm sewer system, so the water will drain out, it's just not done. Other than that, I don't really think there's any, anything major taking place, in, inside, it's just. Substantially complete, but there's a lot of finished work to be done in there, and then it's going to get down to door controls, and that's a multi-week, uh. Set up, process, but they, they really don't want other people in the building trying to move. Um, well, the doors are all locked, so it's kind of hard to do your work when the doors are locked.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's see. Nothing for joint jurisdiction yet?
No, it's still waiting on having a meeting.
But you know, we're sending out a email today, to see when we're available. Any other commissioner reports?
I did make it to a, a basin meeting, finally, so, that was up in Salem. They handed out some money for con- uh, conservation reserve. Projects, trees, so. Good meeting.
And then we've got executive session. So, and that's, what did you want to call it, legal or contractual?
Oh, there's also for personnel, is that right?
And personnel.
Yes, it'd be for both, so it'd be under, uh. One twenty-five. Two subsection. One for personnel, and three for legal.
I know that we go into executive session, uh, pursuant to STC, oh, one twenty-five dash two, subsection one, subsection three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. We're in executive session.
Started.
Come out of executive session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, we're in regular session. Um, we'll bring up the RFP proposal.
I'll make a motion that we move forward. With the proposal. For, uh, Lloyd's RFP bid.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, we're adjourned, thank you.